Well, good evening. I apologize for the delay. We'll go ahead and call the Missoula City Council Meeting to Order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have all members present tonight with the exception of Ms. Savage, Ms. West, and Ms. Farmer. And we have minutes from May 8th for the Missoula City Council Meeting of May 8th. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none, those will be approved. Is there any public comment on items not listed on our agenda? Mr. Matier.
Travis Matier, a Missoula resident. I wanted to bring another little item of show and tell and show you what failure to acknowledge the drug crisis looks like from a local journalism standpoint. The individual, and I'm not going to say his name because I guess I think that would be breaking decorum. It took me about 10 or 15 minutes this morning to find connection on his Facebook page that he's friends with a man selling that had been arrested for selling meth out of the authorized camping site. It didn't take me long to find that. Of course, drugs were only referenced in a very small sentence in this article. If we're not talking about why a 24-year-old young man who looks able-bodied, maybe that's unfair of me to judge from just the visual, why someone that left Superior Montana as an 18-year-old and is still homeless on the streets. When I talked to him this morning, he was very not happy to have to have a conversation at 10:30 in the morning as he was trying to sleep under a tarp. But I wanted to ask him questions because I'm interested in what's going on in this community with drugs and with young people, like Joey Thompson, who was found dead in Mineral County, someone who I am actively investigating to figure out what's going on. So, as City Club talks about the death of local journalism, I think it's long dead when you have articles like this. They can't acknowledge that this young man obviously is dealing with some drug abuse issues and that we don't have the treatment options in this state, or the consequences for someone that's chronically violating the law. And so this is a serious challenge. We need all hands on deck for the drug epidemic that is raging and that will make tourists scared. Okay, the guy that I talked to on this morning, and I'm careful about the three minutes, this morning as I was going to City Club, there was a man who was 34. He was drunk at 10:30 this morning, but he really wanted to have a conversation. And so I had a conversation with him. He just showed up from Spokane a couple months ago. And I let him know that our community is going to try and help people that we can help. But when it comes to people that we can't help that are drinking or doing drugs and making unsafe choices, then our community needs the leadership of people that are being elected to do a job. Okay, so thank you so much for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room tonight? Mr. Moore. Oh, sorry, coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
My name is Kevin Hunt. I live in Ward 1. As an amateur political historian, I thought I would bring to your attention, it was this very month in 1865, that in the Virginia House of Burgesses, a delegate named Patrick Henry orated in opposition to the Stamp Act. Here's what he said. Caesar had his Brutus, Charles I. is Cromwell, and George III. And at that point, without missing a beat amongst the cries of treason, treason, Patrick Henry continued, "And George III," he said with a pregnant pause, "may profit by their example. If this be treason, let us make the most of it." And so I say to you, Hitler had his Goebbels, Trump had his Michael Flynn, and the former president of the Missoula City Council might learn from their examples. For attorney and city councilwoman Gwen Jones and unelected MRA czar Ellen Buchanan, to label the TIF reform advocates, including some members of this council, who testified in Helena recently, as criminal. That just seems like a Trumpist tactic to me, something I can't wrap my head around coming from supposed Democrats, who would call the people out of order and criminal for protesting the same sort of oppressive taxation imposed on the colonists. Had they been alive in 1776, we might very well be curtseying to a queen today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Anyone else tonight? Mr. Moore.
My name is Bob Moore.
Yeah.
Last week, I brought to your attention primarily for the mayor some light in a fair city. I checked again today and it's still there. I'm disappointed that the district hadn't been formed and this blight that I'm reporting has not been fixed. When blatant conditions are identified, an urban renewal district is created. The MRA uses to foster improvements in the area through public-private partnership or direct public improvement projects. So it doesn't have to be blight, but certainly if it is blight, I'm sure you want to fix it. As part of that document, I guess MRA prepared this, in the apartments of 322 Street, it says the TIF grant used for some sort of new public sidewalks. Now, my sidewalks that I want fixed needs repairing. There is already a sidewalk there. So I assume it'll be fixed next week. Interesting article here, Inflation Hurting City Staffing, and it's primarily about the pedestrian bridge, which I'm not familiar with, but there's a bridge someplace. And if you can't believe this, the city will receive bids for the bridge on June 1st. It was first estimated by the City Council for $1 million to repair it. That $1 million went to $2.5 million. The $2.5 million went to $3.5 million. So I know that, you know, y'all's objective seems to be not to have it run efficiently and keep expenses lower, but to make them as high as you can. So you should definitely approve this repair work on this bridge for $3.5 million. But if it was more than $3.5 million, I would just put my foot down and say, no, this is. But I don't expect that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else in the room? Ms. Cunningham.
Hi, I'm Melody Cunningham. And I just wanted to plant a seed. So I know that we've been working on Bear Smart, which is a great idea, and we're really a green community. And what I didn't realize until I read an article recently about how much our food and our landfill adds to methane. And I thought, oh, my gosh, Bear Smart, getting the bear cans, getting the food out of our cans and out of landfill was kind of a nice, a nice combination. So I don't have a solution. I just thought that those two really would work well together. And I'd love to be part of any thinking committee if that was something that the council thought should go forward. So thanks for the time.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the room that is up for public comment. Online comments? Mr. Larson.
War III, that's here. It's also enforcement of zoning laws. Councilman Daniel Carliano, who represents War III, is currently in hot water for allegedly defaming some developers as gentrifiers and capitalists, while failing to address conflicts of interest involving his own fellow councilmen for potentially enriching real estate agency listings. It's ironic that the city attorney's office has issued official opinions on these conflicts of interest involving, because the city attorney's office is basically headed up by his father, the councilman's father. And it's also ironic because we heard from, I've learned from CPDI staff, that the city attorney's office will no longer go after any zoning enforcement. They've issued zero fines ever for any zoning infractions. As long as something's brought into compliance, there's, there's never been a fine. So it might as well not be written into the code. There's, there's actually a $25 to $500 per day violation. And last week, ironically, we heard from a man who had 37 urban camping tickets. So obviously, the city attorney's office has a priority at going after the most disenfranchised category of people in the city, while they haven't issued one single ticket for an illegal VBRO or Airbnb. This has got to be overwhelmingly just horribly feeling for the most disenfranchised populace of our city. And it's just, it's completely ironic. And what's even more ironic is that that man was banned from communicating with the city council's email address and phone number, which is a public forum, by the same city county, by the same city attorney, who is going to use the First Amendment as a defense for Councilman Carliano's defamation case. And what is the city council want us to believe is the problem currently? Parking. Parking is a great problem starter, I guess. But even the Missoula Parking Commission can send out a letter when you're, you're, you're supposed to pay a $10 parking fine. CPDI staff haven't been approved to send out so much as a letter for the hundreds of non-compliant VBRO and Airbnb rental homes in the city. How did I learn this? By reporting the mayor's campaign managers' illegal Airbnb, which, by the way, could have up to $9,000 worth of fines levied against it if the city attorney's office would actually levy a single fine. It's time for the city council and the city attorney's office to prioritize the needs and concerns of their constituents and take actions to address these pressing issues. Let's not forget that the council email and voicemail is a public forum and everyone deserves fair accessibility to government. We need accountability and fairness and a government that works for the people, not for a select few. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. And seeing no additional general public comment tonight, we can move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybain.
Thanks, Mayor Hess. I will share my screen. So folks can follow along. So this is the city, Missoula City Council's committee schedule for May 17th. That's this coming Wednesday. Uh, hang on just a second. So the Public Works and Mobility Committee will start off the day from 10:30 in the morning to 11:15. They will be taking up an item about the shared micro mobility programs. Public Safety, Health and Operations Committee meet from 11:30 in the morning until noon, taking up a resolution to annually recognize Juneteenth National Freedom Day. And Land Use and Planning Committee will round out the day from 1 o'clock to 2:30. They'll be taking up, looks like, two items. The first is code reform parking requirements near transit stops and the 3800 Lincoln Road family transfer. And that's our committee schedule this coming week.
Thank you, Ms. Raybain. Any changes to that schedule? Seeing none, that'll stand as presented. And we can move on to our consent agenda, which is where we take up items that were generally approved unanimously in city council committees, save a little time on Monday nights. We will have Ms. Raybain read the list of items allowed, and then we'll take community comment on those items, and then we'll take council vote. Ms. Raybain.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't turn my microphone off. So y'all probably heard me cough there. Tonight's consent agenda does have eight items, and the first is always is to pay the city's bills. This week, city council is being asked, hang on, let me share my screen, and everybody can follow along too. There we go. So the first item is to prove counts payable totaling $993,440.27 for checks that are dated May 16th of 2023. Number two is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign amendment number one to the professional services agreement with WGM, an engineering firm here in Zulup for the South Hills Stormwater Improvements at a cost not to exceed $29,585.25. Number three is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Charlie Beaton and Karma Gilligan to the Downtown Business Improvement District as South of the Clark-Furk representative for Beaton and Zone One representative for Gilligan for terms that begin July, excuse me, June 1st of 2023 and expiring on May 31st of 2027. Number four is to appoint Amy Allison Thompson to the Food Policy Advisory Board for term that begins immediately and ends December 31st of 2024. Number five is to adopt a resolution declaring certain city of Missoula property is surplus and authorizing its disposal, surplus technology equipment. Number six is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment with CenturyLink for the provision of metro ethernet service to locations identified in contract for total annual estimate of $182,348. Number seven is to adopt a resolution, Missoula City Council, awarding $20,000 in neighborhood grant, neighborhood improvement grant funds for fiscal year 2023 to certain individuals, and directing staff to negotiate contracts with said individuals, the mayor's signature. And number eight is to reject all bids and return bid bonds for the Fort Missoula Regional Park Pickleball Expansion, city project number FMRPPB 2023. And that's tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Raybain. On the consent agendas, would anyone from the public like to comment tonight?
Yes, Travis Matier, a Missoula resident. I just want to point out that the Pavarillo Center Executive Director position is a great position to start a career in sort of civic or political government. And so it might not pay a lot, but there's intangibles. And I just want to recommend anyone considering getting involved in, in local government, consider being Executive Director for the Pavarillo Center. As long as you keep your mouth shut about people that are murdered inside your facility, and some of the sexual assaults that are happening, and some of the other violence, that you might be able to ascend into board position.
I'm going to ask you to stop making a personal attack about one of our--
That's not a personal attack. I'm talking about an organization.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Point of order. Everyone should feel comfortable in this chamber, and shouting does not do that. Point of order, Mr.--
So, so we're going to recess? We're going to recess and we'll be back in order when--
Racist and outrageous. You are not Democrats or not liberals.
Okay, Mayor Hess, we're ready to go again.
Thank you, Ms. Raybain. Any questions from council members? Would anyone like to divide the question or speak on any of the items? Seeing none, Ms. Raybain, we can have a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Okay, on the eight items of the consent agenda, Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra.
Yes.
Carliano.
Yes.
Kontos.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Fasika.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That is nine ayes and three absents.
And the consent agenda passes. We don't have any items under our, or any special presentations tonight, nor do we have any proclamations. We do have three items for final consideration, and we'll take them in the order listed. The first is the funding recommendations for the 2023 Unified Application, I'm sorry, the Unified Application for Program Year 2023. And I'll go first to our housing staff, in case there's any additional information tonight.
Hey, thanks for having us. There's nothing additional.
Thank you, Sarah Scherz. Any questions from council members? Seeing none, we can, Ms. West is absent tonight, so we'll take a motion from the vice chair, Mr. Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recommend motions of resolution granting approval of the city Missoula Unified Application Round Year 2023, awarding Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Home Investment Partnership Program, Home American Rescue Act, and Community Development Block Grant Funds to certain organizations, directing staff to negotiate contracts and agreements, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contracts and agreements with said organizations.
Thank you. And the motion's in order. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Jones.
Comments, not questions.
I'm sorry, yeah. Comments or questions?
Comments, though.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to say that this is one of the most positive things we get to vote on every year. It's taking dollars and putting them towards really worthy projects that will make a big difference in people's lives here in Missoula. It is frustrating in that these federal dollars are not adjusted for inflation over the years. They remain stagnant, and that means frankly, there's less impact year after year. It's a great tool, but I would love to see it updated. But in the meantime, we use it as best we can, and I'm happy to vote yes on this.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anyone else? Ms. Becerra.
Thank you. I just want to thank staff for all their time in reviewing all the applications that were submitted. And I want to thank all the applicants for putting together an application packet for review. And I just want to say that if we had more resources, we would be happy to fund everything that comes in. But unfortunately, we have a limited amount of dollars, and those are going to very worthy organizations that are going to help us move the needle on housing, both in terms of acquisition of property and rental opportunities. Again, very happy that we have a affordable housing trust fund that we can dip into for these kind of projects. And again, thanks to everyone on that panel who reviewed all the applications and helped make the decision.
Thank you, Ms. Becerra. Ms. Cheryl.
Thanks. I agree with my colleagues and also just wanted to thank everyone for the applications they put in. We had a really diverse array of applications and different things we're funding, and it is a multifaceted problem. And I think that if you look through the array of applications that we received, I think that that's shown in those. So I'm excited to approve it. I always wish, wish we could approve more. But yeah, this is great. I'm happy to approve these projects.
Thank you, Ms. Cheryl. Mr. Carliano?
Yeah, I just wanted to also say that I support these grants and the use of funds towards this. And I think this will have a real tangible impact on Missoulaans' lives who are looking for an affordable place to live. And just want to remind us that the staff recommended $850,000 towards the Affordable Housing Trust Fund last year. And, you know, we only funded it $250,000. So that was a city council decision. And I hope that we can, you know, be able to approve more grants like this in the future and get that money towards the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to see more projects like this.
Thank you, Mr. Carliano. Anyone else? Seeing none, we can have a roll call vote?
Hey, on the resolution for the Unified Application Grant Awards, Becerra.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I failed to take public comment.
Oh.
And I have a few online. I have Carissa Trujillo first.
Good evening, everyone. Carissa Trujillo with Homeward. And I would just like to thank the Housing Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee for the recommendations to fund our homeownership center, as well as the portfolio improvements. In addition, thank you to the city staff and the panel who did the application review. The work that is being accomplished with these funding sources should be celebrated, and we celebrate your efforts and your support. With the funding for the homeownership center, we will positively impact over 1,000 people with homebuyer and financial education and counseling in a time where the dollars are being stretched thin in our community. In addition, 67 Missoulians living at or below 80% of the area median income are going to be positively impacted by the improvements to their homes that this funding is going to support. That includes seven children, 17 people living with disabilities, and 16 senior citizens. So thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. And I have Heather Blaylon next.
Yes, I echo what Carissa has testified to, but I want to thank council and the committee and everybody that participated. This, the funding that you're recommending for the homeownership center, for our portfolio investments, and for Creekside are critical funds. I applaud Missoula and staff for working with us to be proactive in reinvestment in affordable homes and homes people can afford, because buildings don't last forever. And whether we develop them or preserve them, the investments we're making today will keep all the people that Carissa spoke about and another 162 families and individuals home over these coming years. So thank you guys very much. We really appreciate the acknowledgement.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight in the room or online? Mr. Moore? Eight, one.
On eight, one, for quite some time now, I have been concerned about shortcutting with the agenda. For example, in the 5.8, reject all bids received and return bid bonds for the Fort Missoula Regional Park Pickleball Expansion. Such and such a number. I think it'd be nice if you're going to have people out here reviewing this and voting on some of these things, to say something about this. For example, why is these bids being rejected? Not that I disagree with it, but I think you ought to start explaining what these things are.
So, and do you have any comments on eight point one tonight?
Well, on eight, one, that's a reference to eight, one. You have, you have no idea how much money you're talking about. It seems to me like we should have some idea what the money is talking. Maybe these council knows, maybe they don't.
Thanks. And I'll note that we had a public hearing and a staff report on this last week, and we had this in our council committees as well. And in, you know, those items are also attached to the agenda, and we'd be happy to walk you through that after the meeting. and we'd be happy to walk you through that after the meeting. Anyone else tonight? Seeing none, I apologize for skipping that. We can now have a roll call vote.
Sorry about that. All right, on the resolution, Becerra.
Yes.
Carlina.
Yes.
Kontos.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Basika.
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That is nine ayes and three absents.
And the motion passes. And our second item is a rezone of 327 Southwest Higgins. And I'll turn it over to Lauren Stevens for any additional information that came about after the staff report.
I have no new information for you.
Thank you. And any questions from council members? Seeing none, Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A move that we adopt an ordinance rezoning the subject property located, yeah, we're on the right page, located at the southeast corner of Southwest Higgins Avenue in Northview Drive, and legally described in Exhibit B from our 5.4 residential, 5.4 and B1-1 Neighborhood Business/DE-C-2 Design Excellence Overlay Corridor Typology 2, to B2-1 Community Business/DE-C-2 Design Excellence Overlay Corridor Typology 2, based on the findings of fact and the staff report.
Thanks. The motion's in order. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, any, any public comment? And seeing no public comment, we can have a roll call vote.
Okay, on the ordinance to rezone, personal Southwest Higgins. Carlina.
Yes.
Kontos.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Basika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Becerra?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That is nine ayes and three absent, and it passes.
Thanks, and the motion is approved. Our, our next item, our final item of consideration is the rezone at Idaho and Inez. And same format here, I'll go to Mr. Stark first, and then I'd like to ask Mr. Stark about any new information that's emerged from the staff perspective since our public hearing last week and our LUP meeting this, this week.
Um, new information, we have received a notice of intent to petition. I believe the petition is being dropped off this evening. That's the new information. No information or application has substantially, or has changed at all since last reviewed by city council.
Thank you. I, I suspect that council might have questions based on public comments, so what I'd like to do first is go to, go to public comment. And anyone from the public or applicant teams are welcome, welcome to comment.
Doug Hoss Davis, I've been here several times the last couple of weeks. We find ourselves in the unfortunate position of protesting the current zoning request. As you all know, we had a, have an active petition to vacate the right-of-way in exchange for us providing, my wife and I providing two affordable units deed restricted and allowing the applicants to construct at least one additional unit. And that, and we've also offered to construct several modest units. Last Friday, close of business, we received the staff report on our petition, and I'll just quote our engineer, who read, read the staff report as well, passed it around the office to his colleagues. I'll paraphrase a little bit. He says, typically speaking, he's been at this in City Missoula for over 20 years. They might have two or three points made in the staff report. He put the staff report in air quotes, by the way. And he says, "Almost every point is incorrect, basic opinion, or extremely arguable." So, in the end, the conditions placed on the petition were not terribly onerous. I think some, maybe one or two, might be objectionable to the applicants, but we have not communicated with them, and this is a team effort. It's a collaborative, collaborative effort that we've been involved in with the applicants on and off for the last almost two years, trying to, trying to figure out a solution that our neighbors to the west and us could live with, get the applicants most or all of what they want, and staff is just simply not interested. So as such, I know we're not here to talk about the vacation petition. Nevertheless, the two are linked in our minds, since we're unable to reach a agreement in that regard. Because in order to get a direct communication with staff, which has been, been denied repeatedly with us, we would have to pay an additional $2,500 fee. And in reading the report, it just seems like an impossible battle to overcome the comments of staff regarding our petition. So with that, we are protesting zoning request here on the grounds that the applicants should have never had the expectation to have this level of density. And, and in achieving that level of density, they did, to their credit, work with us. And so I don't entirely blame the applicants here. Ultimately, it's city staff that has derailed this and made it just not really a workable situation for us. But without, without, without a compromise in, with regards to the development, we're just not able to spend any more money on this. We, you know, we've, we've dug deep to make this work, and it's just not happening. In my, or our protest, which I've given to Mr. Nugent here, I noted an exchange at city council several years ago, 2016, I was here. Not so much to protest a zoning change that Mr. Cedarburg and his colleagues proposed for the block to the east of us, but mostly just to sort of express concerns about zoning creep into our neighborhood, where everybody else has tried their best to live by the rules of engagement, FEMA rules, zoning rules, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And ultimately, we live there in part because of those rules, right? And, and so at, at that time, I now, in retrospect, I understand why the city staff recommended the zoning change, and Mr. Cedarburg's units have been constructed, and that's all fine and good, and it makes sense to me, looking back, why they did that. But if possible, maybe Spencer could pull this up. I've got a link to, a Vimeo link to a very short segment of that meeting in my protest, or our protest that, that were, Mayor Hess, at that time, council member Hess, and asked a question of staff, Drew Larson, regarding that, it was 1134 Montana Street zoning request. And it's very telling, and I think appropriate, to what's being requested today. So Spencer, if you're able to pull that up, that would be wonderful. And then I just have just a couple more comments. If, if you're able to watch that, it would be great.
Our, our stream, our technology doesn't, we, we can't do that, but I, if I did.
I can paraphrase it then. So, Jordan, you asked staff, who was Drew Larson at the time, who was presenting for staff, how, essentially how this change could be supported. And this is, again, a block to the east. And ultimately, the response was, and I understand this now, that that section of our neighborhood was designated community business or something like this. Even though it had R20 zoning, it was adjacent on two sides to much more permissive zoning. So it wasn't really a dramatic change, given what was next to it. And most importantly, I think, the 2000 neighborhood plan suggested that that was an acceptable use of that zone. But then the most important part. Drew Larson pointed to these exact three lots that are in front of you today for consideration and said, "We would not support a zoning change out here surrounded by R20 and R80 zoning." Because that would be, according to city attorney Jim Nugent, I pasted a memo from Mr. Nugent in my, our protest here that says it would be illegal and further unconstitutional spot zoning. And how do you define that? Well, the Supreme Court of Montana and various precedent, legal precedent, suggests that when the rezone, in this case of these three parcels, is in order to benefit one owner at the expense of every owner surrounding, and I've documented how we are strongly believe this impacts us negatively, then it is not only illegal, it is unconstitutional spot zoning. And so what we are requesting is that you either vote this down or at minimum, send it back to committee and buy time to do a proper planning of our neighborhood, which I know is in progress, but this is parcel at a time, absolutely, I think as Jim or Fred Rice said in his candidacy for mayor, causing violence to neighborhoods, when it's not necessary, because we have a plan that works for everybody, but staff is uninterested. One, one anecdote. Well, so I, I just believe that you have a legal and moral obligation to reject this, honestly. And I'll give you one anecdote. So approximately a year ago, there was a neighborhood meeting where this issue was brought up, and Mr. Cedarburg, Mr. Mostad, Mr. Kirby came to present. There was a wide range of people from the neighborhood who discussed this. And afterwards, our neighbor Amy, who lives a couple of houses down, who signed on to our protest petition, asked Mr. Mostad what he would do if somebody proposed this next to him and, and expected to achieve it. Didn't skip a beat. His response was, "I'd move away." So those of us who live on this block don't have that opportunity. We don't have the means, we don't have the desire. This block is our home. It's not a bunch of land that we look at, as expressed in the staff report, as a place to just capitalize to the maximum and move somewhere else with our proceeds. This is our home. And it's our livelihood, it's our retirement, it's everything to us. It might be our kids' future place to live. Maybe they have a chance to live in Missoula. So I'll leave it at that. I would encourage you to read the full protest. I would encourage you, please, to watch the video from 2016. I think these are all highly relevant facts, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? Mr. Cedarburg?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hess. My name is Dan Cedarburg, and I am one of the owners of the property that is up for recommendation for rezoning tonight. Just want to make a couple of points. This is a valid petition to rezone. It was recommended by staff. It was unanimously recommended by the planning board. It, it meets the growth policy, it meets the master plan, and it allows for 15 or 16 units to be added to the inventory in the city of Missoula at a value, our target value is around $400,000. That's the target, where there's the least inventory right now. The second point would be that voting to rezone tonight does not necessarily preclude some kind of a, of an alternate plan to our 15-unit plan that we submitted with the application. The 16-unit plan is still allowable under the zoning. I don't know if it's viable. If the neighbors aren't going to make the petition to vacate the alley, then it isn't viable. But that's their choice, not ours. If they make that petition, we will support it. We have said that we think that the 16-unit plan with the alley vacated or moved, as we would say, because we're providing the alley internally in our property. If we go with the 16-unit, if we move the alley, we think that's a better project, and it adds another unit to the mix. And finally, as I, as I said before, I think that you'll be sending the right message to the development community if you approve this. We, in good faith, looked at the master plan, looked at the, looked at all the documents, and there are 16 dots on this property in that plan that you approved. We went and we reached out to the neighbors, and we attempted to make a plan that would work. We worked with staff, we've worked with you all. And we think now is the time to vote. We think we've done everything correctly. We think we, it's a good project. We would respectfully request that you approve the rezoning tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cedarburg. Anyone else tonight?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. One other point. We looked at the, the city ordinance with regard to protests, and it does indicate that the protest has to be made before the city council votes. But it also says it has to be submitted to the zoning officer or made, made public record, and that it has to allow sufficient time for the city clerk to determine the validity of the petition. And we have a question, and that would be for Mr. Nugent, I think, or, or Ms. Raybine to address, as to whether that is a valid protest position, given the way that it's been presented. So we would request that that be determined before you vote on the matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else tonight?
Hello, I'm Eva Dunfrobig. I also live on the block of Inez, Idaho, Montana, and California streets, the, the, next to the property that we're talking about right now. And I've signed the petition as well. Just to respond to some of Mr. Cedarburg's comments. First of all, we were, were told by Mayor Hess that we could submit our protest by 5:00 p.m. today, and we have submitted it to Spencer Stark and on the Engage Missoula site. And we believe that we've met all of the requirements. And I, I believe the language is that they would prefer it be sent a week ahead of time, but we didn't have that option under these circumstance, circumstances, because we were waiting for the staff report. Let's see, a couple other things. Just to note, we reached out to the developers, they did not reach out to us. We made a lot of effort to collaborate with them. That's a minor thing. We do appreciate that we, they've been working with us this whole time. But we really made an effort to do that on our part. I want to also make a comment. Doug, my husband, didn't get, have enough time to make all the points he wanted to make. A lot of them are made in our official protest, but I did want to mention the floodplain issues, which are substantial, and the reason that that land is zoned R20 is because of the floodplain. And the adjacent land is R80 because of the floodplain. And it is a 100-year floodplain, and we do have concerns about that. And the reason we did not bring that up before and to not protest is because we wanted to collaborate with the developers, and we believe that the alternative plan would mitigate some of those floodplain issues with the highest point of the block being the alley right-of-way. Also, I sympathize with the developers in that they were encouraged by staff and that they have come this far. and that they have come this far and spent uh, at least a couple of years working on this. But we have also spent a lot of time, um, probably the same amount of time or more working on this. And we were also encouraged by staff to continue and to revise our petition to vacate the alley. We have also spent a lot of time and we're not going to make that money back. We're not developers. We just want to live in the neighborhood and live in our homes that we've created over the past fifteen years. Um, and uh, finally, I just want to say how disappointed I am with the city of Missoula that this did not work out. I mean, we, this could have been a great example for what's happening all over the city with, you know, the um, with existing residents who have lived in Missoula for a long time. We moved here as adults. I'm sure many of you moved here as adults because you like the quality of life here, you like the open space, you like the community minded people, the collaborative approach that most of our community members have and um, the thoughtfulness of density in our community. And even like three years ago, I think you would have thought more about this than you're thinking about it now. Um, I hope that you will think about reconsidering this or at least delaying it. Um, we would like to continue with the alley vacation petition, but um, we just don't feel like it, um, it's going to succeed. And if the developers would like to continue, we encourage you to pay the fee. We've already spent at least $15,000 uh, on this and we cannot pay the fee not knowing that city council will support it or not at this point. So um, with that, I just, I'm just disappointed. I, I thought that this could be a great collaboration with residents on the block, with uh, future, uh, with developers and future residents of the block. Um, you could have gotten two affordable housing units out of it for the community. But um, that's just not what the city staff wanted.
Thank you. Anyone else? Online, Mr. Larson?
Yeah, Matt Larson, more three. Uh, just this speaks uh, another time to the selective zoning enforcement and uh, kind of uh, cherry picking of Title twenty that, that the city council as a, as a whole is, is really all about. Um, we've seen it with Fort and Ronalds and the Reed, where over seven hundred people came out to speak against that. Um, and now, you know, some of the city council members that sit before you uh, have that real estate listing as a personal part of their portfolio. Um, it's, it's, it's just, it's, it's really agonizing to see um, the city get split apart like this and especially um, especially disturbing to see all these units be put into a hundred year floodplain uh, by city staff. Um, that's one of the most uh, just, I, I don't know how else to say it, but that's, that's just kind of dumb. And I think uh, the collaboration that's needed with uh, the, the rezoning and vacation of a right of way here with this development, I think uh, this, this needs to go back to committee. It's, it's, it's just all falling apart right here. But uh, you know, it's part and parcel with the, the city council's majority wanting to gentrify Missoula. Um, nobody can afford these units. The two affordable units that, that are uh, on the table uh, for the developer were, were, uh, were nixed. So I think we should just go back to committee at the very least on this and um, I think uh, some of our counselors that have open litigation with defamation should uh, should consider this uh, this, this vote especially important too. Uh, but yeah, it's a, it's interesting. It'll be interesting to see how this vote turns out. Um, but I'm not very faithful and uh, not very uh, uh, I don't have very much faith in, in city council sending this back to committee. Just based on prior results.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Anyone else for public comment? All right, um, we'll go to, we'll go to questions from council members next. Any questions? Ms. Jones?
Sure, I just had a couple of questions. Um, first for city attorney Jim Nugent, I think he's on the the meeting. Um, Mr. Nugent, I just wanted you to address the issue of spot zoning within the context of this proposed rezone and hear your thoughts on the issue.
Sure, uh, I'm not aware of anyone requesting our office to look into whether it's spot zoning. Spot, all zoning is spot zoning. It's a matter of whether it's illegal spot zoning. And there are three criteria that are generally used by the Montana Supreme Court to determine if the spot zoning is illegal. Uh, one of them is how it affects the character of the neighborhood and another is it's someone uh, getting a huge benefit or a special benefit uh, from, from the rezoning. Uh, with respect to the petition, the city clerk's office and the planning staff always have been afforded time in order to double check and verify signatures on petitions. So uh, there typically is, and I don't have the artist in front of me, but there typically is a time period for the city clerk's office and the planners to investigate whether the petition signatures are valid. I would have to have time to review the facts to try and pass judgment on uh, whether there's any illegal spot zoning. Typically, I think what the citation to the spot zoning is from quite an old opinion and is taken out of context. So uh, like I say, spot zoning happens all the time because every zoning is a spot zoning.
Ms. Jones?
Follow up?
Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. Nugent. Um, and on a separate tack, I had a question for Mr. Spencer. If you could just reiterate, I think we've covered this, but um, the proposed zoning is in compliance with what our growth policy recommends for this area. Could you address that, please?
Yes, I'm, I'll pull up the uh, presentation real fast just for visual aid. Um, but yes, we examine a range of criteria, principle of which is the compliance with the growth policy, as you stated. Sorry. So when we examine the growth policy, we looked at, uh, typically we look at the current relatable zoning. Uh, in this case, it would be for a more intense zone district that will allow for um, more intense commercial. Um, after reviewing the growth policy, we uh, looked at two goals, livability goal number four and housing goal number four, which talks about uh, looking at the compatibility with residential developments uh, compared against this land use table. In addition, um, a statement from page one fourteen of the growth policy says, dictates that decisions and implementation based on these determinations should include consideration of the entire growth policy, not just those um, recommended uh, current relatable zonings uh, and site specific conditions. Uh, comparing against the housing goals and uh, looking at the comparable densities. Um, we uh, worked with the applicant and uh, proposed a B two dash two zone district to um, meet the goals of the commi- community mixed use, land use designation, while also considering those other goals of housing and livability.
Thanks. Um, next on the queue, Ms. Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. I have a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
There. Um, so, so I just, I asked this in committee on Wednesday, but I just want to restate it. I know that we, we have a protest in front of us, but the rezone that is in front of us right now would not stop any later rezone or possible alley vacation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I, I just want that, that stated. I understand that it is more come, that there's some complexity here. Um, could we get someone to answer the question? Uh, maybe um, Jim, the validity, validity of the protest and the timing of the staff report?
Well, i- if I may, I, I did advise uh, folks that they could turn in a protest provision up until the, the meeting. And if I, if I was in error on that, um, that's something that we need to make good on in some, in some capacity. I believe Mr. Stark has some, uh, some ideas on that. And I think Ms. Ms. Rabine also could speak to that. Um, Ms. Rabine, could you, could you take that first?
It's been my experience that protests have occurred on and been ta- placed and taken off by property owners at the council meeting. Um, so it's up until a final decision is made uh, that protests can be made and withdrawn. In my professional experience here, I will defer to city attorney Jim Nugent on that. And then the protest uh, email came to our account about two forty this afternoon. And uh, the statutory requirements for evaluating that protest involve its proximity to the rezoning. And uh, that I have not had a ti- chance to talk with our planning staff uh, to do that analysis, uh, to see if the folks who have signed this protest indeed live uh, approximate to the proposed rezoning in accordance with the law to see if it triggers a super majority. So protest does not cancel the request for the rezoning. It ju- it uh, triggers a super majority vote of the council that is two thirds of the council members who are present and voting at the meeting where it is.
Great, thank you. I have one other question.
Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, the, the point around the floodplain. Uh, could someone speak to that a bit more? I mean, that, that's a, that's a FEMA. I- is that having to do with the reworking of the floodplain? And I mean, there's lots of places people build in floodplain, so it's, it, there are some different requirements around it. But that, that wouldn't trigger the flood, this rezone would, the one that's in front of us right now, knowing there's a possibility of another one coming in front of us along with an alley vacation. But the one that's in front of us right now would only trigger the changes in building or whatever all the floodplain requirements are for that specific property that is being asked to rezone, not for the, anything having to do with the rest of the block, correct? That was really circuitous. I'm sorry. Do I need to restate that in another?
All right. Luckily, our floodplain administrator is here to demystify it. Mr. Park?
Cassie Truphard, uh, planning supervisor and floodplain administrator. Um, I might need you to restate the last bit of that question, just so I know I'm understanding it correctly.
I, I just, the, the floodplain requirements, whatever those are specifically, are triggered by the new floodplain map and by FEMA, not by us in any way.
Um.
That's number one.
Gosh, I can start with that. So though we are remapping our floodplanes, even without those adopted, this area is already in a mapped floodplain. Um, that being said, at the time of building permit, uh, per federal, state, and local requirements, they will need floodplain permits and they will need to build with their first floor and mechanical elevated two feet above that base flood elevation. Due to those regulations in place, you can build in a floodplain, you can do so safely. Um, the, this portion of the floodplain is referred to as the flood fringe. And the way that it's modeled to create these maps, it plans on further development and that area being filled in with development without causing a rise to the base flood elevation. Meaning that development would not impact other properties as long as there's still good flow paths, um, places for the water to go, which is checked during review.
Okay, I think that answers the questions that I have. Thank you.
Mr. Carroll, you know?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, um, if we could clarify, I've got two questions, I guess. If we could clarify what can be built in R twenty zoning. And then my second question is, um, should we have enough time to read through the petition before voting on the rezone? Um, because it looks like we just got emailed that at uh, two hours before the meeting started.
Mr. Stark, do I, do I take those or the, the first one at least?
Yeah, the first one is a comparable comparison between the proposed zoning and the existing R twenty zoning. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you.
So on your screen, you'll see a comparison between R twenty and B two dash two. R twenty allows for detached homes and uh, residential support services. These include daycare, preschool, religious assembly. In addition, the density permitted in uh, R twenty is one unit for every twenty thousand square feet. Um, and the uh, setbacks listed apply. This is a front and rear setback of twenty five feet, side setback of fifteen feet, and a street side setback of twelve point five feet uh, with maximum heights of thirty feet. Uh, B two dash two allows for a broader range of uses, including uh, commercial buildings, single purpose residential and mixed use buildings. Uh, the density permitted in this zoning district is one thousand square feet per uh, uh, one thousand square feet of parcel area per dwelling unit. Um, there are no setbacks unless the, the parcel is directly a, a budding uh, or a a zoning district, uh, our zoning district, sorry, um, in this case, uh, fifteen foot. Um, setback would be applied on the eastern boundary. Uh, maximum height is permitted to up to fifteen, fifty feet. Uh, that, that being said, there is a provision that along any uh, setback line, um, the building be stepped back at a thirty five feet maximum uh, adjacent to the uh, parcel and then step back to the, to the full height uh, within the internal parcel. And then the general permitted uses again are multi dwelling, business support services, commercial services, communication services, uh, financial services, micro brewery and micro distillery, among others. And then forgive me, I uh, forgot the second question.
Uh, thanks for going over that. Um, um, the other question was, I was just wondering if we should have time to read the protest petition for the rezone. Um, since we got emailed it just two hours before this meeting.
Um, that, I would say that decision is uh, rests with city council.
Uh, I have Ms. Anderson next.
Thanks so much. Um, thanks for the presentation, um, Spencer. My question is in regards to density around the growth, um, growth policy. And I think you talked a little, you kind of, I think it was Ms. Um, Jones who asked that question, but there seems to be a change in a more density recommended in our growth policy from previous years. When is the growth policy that we're currently working under? When was that adopted?
So we are still uh, under the R Missoula twenty fifteen growth policy. There have been updates to it, but the, there's been uh, there's uh, but the, this uh, recommendation has been in place since uh, twenty fifteen. Um, in addition, there was an amendment to the growth policy in the form of the downtown master plan in I want to say twenty nineteen. Um, and that just goes into further detail. Um, and I can share excerpt from that. Further detail about the sub areas of the, the downtown. So this, this area is the Wyoming street area, which uh, looks at a um, densification is uh, is kind of projected in this area and a mix of missing middle housing, which is what's highlighted on this block and uh, residential services and commercial services being located generally around um, this block or this, this uh, Wyoming street area.
Um, may I have a follow up?
Follow up?
So it, um, thanks for showing that. So it does sound like, you know, one of the criteria that was followed that staff feels is though this density, despite not necessarily meeting the immediate adjacent neighbor's density is within um, our growth policy. is within um, our growth policy recommendations for more density in an area such as this, especially given there's very few opportunities for raw land in the middle of a city center. Um, is that your staff's interpretation?
The growth policy projects C one four, um, the C two four M one R two, which allow for a greater number of density. The land use designation projects um, a mixture of commercial uses with high intensity residential, which again would be increased density. And then furthermore, the um, downtown master plan projects missing middle housing. Um, again, that kind of assumes multiple units, uh, and and we could conclude a increased density.
Great, thank and follow up and follow up. And it it looks like from the presentation that you've been referencing back to on slide six of the sixteen, it shows the surrounding neighborhood, um, zoning, and it seems as though it it looks like within a block of this proposed lot um, is already B two dash two zoning. Um, yeah, that's the, oh, you just, but, um. And how far? I guess, does, I'm assuming the B two dash two continues on, if I'm looking at this map, it would be eastward? Because there's quite a bit of density, just a couple of blocks adjacent to this with the uh, redoing of the Sawmill District.
I will pull up a zoning map. I don't guess. Um, it's bounded by the uh, open space, which is where the trail is, and then goes further down into M one R dash two, which is a high intensity, commercial, residential, um, um, manufacturing district.
Thanks so much.
Ms. Becerra.
Distracted by all the maps, um, but I think that Ms. Anderson asked a lot of my questions, and I I just want to be super clear that the growth policy currently, the relatable zoning districts are C one dash four, C two dash four, M R dash two. Those are all more intense than what staff is currently recommending, which is B two dash two. Is that correct?
Yes, they allow for more intense commercial uses such as petrol stations, um, and uh, car sales. Um, and B two dash two allows for lower intensity um, commercial uses. Um, so when comparing that to the um, residential pattern that's currently in place, we um, use those little ability goals and those housing goals to recommend uh, and work with the applicant to recommend B two dash two.
Right, and currently, sorry, follow up. Currently, the R twenty um, zoning on the property would allow for one dwelling unit. And the B two would allow for up to twenty nine. Is that correct?
The parcel is approximately twenty nine thousand square feet. Um, R twenty allows for one unit for every twenty thousand square feet. Um, since the parcel is approximately twenty nine thousand square feet, that would mean that one unit currently would be permitted on the parcel. B two dash two allows for one unit per every thousand square feet of parcel area. Um, and again, the parcel area is twenty nine thousand square feet, and so yes, up to twenty nine units uh, could potentially be installed. Again, that's assuming uh, compliance with all development regulations such as uh, parking, landscaping, et cetera. And so the current um, site plan is for fifteen units, which accommodates all of our requirements or can accommodate all of our requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sherrill again.
Uh, thank you. Would you bring the zoning map up again? Uh, the one um, where the with the parcel on it? It was one that you were showing when Ms. Anderson was slide six. Okay, so um, we're talking about the the square that's the um, B two dash two. What is this? Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, what is the uh, property zone to the, I guess it's north of there?
Um, the property to the north is R eighty.
Could you tell me what's in what what uh, the density of that zoning area is?
Yes. I I reference everything. Uh, don't really care to guess, so I'll I'm just pulling up the title twenty parcel and building standards. So uh, it's eighty thousand uh, square feet uh, um, of parcel area per a dwelling unit. So it, yep.
Uh, I don't have anyone else in the queue for questions. Any additional questions? Ms. Jones?
So I just wanted to clarify, is there a deadline on hearing a vote on this tonight? Otherwise, I think it might be wise to keep it and finalize a vote one week from now, given that there was doc. It's confusing because we have a box that we're in in terms of this rezone, but I know there's extenuating circumstances and the timing on those extenuating circumstances. Um, it seems like it would be a, I think we could keep this and do a final vote a week from tonight and have everyone have time to then um, review all documentation. So I'm not sure if I need to make a motion on that, um, but I would like to, first of all, my question is-
Under rules, one member may refer, and I am back to committee after
Okay.
after a hearing, so that-
Do we have a time deadline on voting on it tonight?
Uh, I'll defer to um, staff, but my understanding is that there's not a statutory deadline on um, on this item.
That is correct. This is not um, bound by statutory deadlines that you're familiar with, with uh, subdivision review. This is, there there's time to review, and postponement would not take us out of that timeframe.
Ms. Jones? So I I would like to refer this back to committee, um, simply for the opportunity to be able to fully read the um, protest petition, which I think we've all gotten, but frankly, it's hard juggling all of that and getting ready for a Monday night meeting. Um, I guess we could add this on to the L U P schedule on Wednesday and then have a final vote a week from tonight. I understand, um, this is an inconvenience for some folks. I I apologize for that, but trying to just um, make sure that all representations are covered so that all documents can be looked at.
So Ms. Jones has uh, elected to refer this back to committee. Mr. Nugent, would you hear that this? Would would you adjust the committee's schedule to hear that this week?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, isn't that without objection, one person can refer it back?
It's uh, it would be a spending the rules to to do that. Ms. Raybine, can you can you um, fill that it, or can you correct me on that if I'm wrong?
Hey, so my understanding is the public hearing was closed, and we are out for final consideration, so the motion that Mr. Nugent has made is um, uh, was was recommended by the committee. We need a little more time to analyze the protest.
I stand corrected then.
And I, so I think that, yeah, not one council member, it takes a majority to send it back or without objection to send it back to committee. Alternately, uh, you could hold it on the floor tonight, bring it back Monday, and staff can bring you a recommendation as to the validity of the protest with revision. You wouldn't need to get up and land you some planning if you don't feel there's any other discussion that needs to happen other than the protest and whether it triggers this maturity vote.
Nugent? Um, just for clarification, we do not have a motion on the floor. It hasn't been made yet, has it?
Okay, Ms. Raybine?
I have a motion that was made at the top of this consideration by Elderman Nugent. Usually we call on the councilperson for a motion on final consideration.
I don't believe that's happened.
Nope.
You don't? Okay.
There's there's no motion on the floor.
Okay. Oh, I stand, okay.
So without objection, um, Ms. Jones has suggested this go back to committee.
I object. Not to me, but I object.
Okay, Ms. Jones, you're welcome to make a motion to refer this back to committee.
Um, yes, I will make a motion to refer this back to committee.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Nugent, could you hear that this week and accommodate the schedule that Ms. Jones has suggested?
I mean, uh, land use planning is the last committee of the day, so the time we gave you all last week, we would just be taking back this week.
Okay. Um, okay, this is a procedural motion, um. I guess we can take public comment on this and then um, and then vote on the motion. Anyone want to comment? Mr. Cedarburg?
Um, I would I would point out, Dan Cedarburg, uh, one of the owners of the property. I would point out that the neighbors have indicated that they are not going to present an alley vacation um, petition. They're not going to spend the twenty five hundred dollars. That's the conclusion we came to in August of last year, before we made our proposal. That's before you tonight. And so I I don't know what else there is to consider. Uh, we, um, we've, we've been waiting for eight plus months. And um, I don't think there's anything else that that will be new because they have said they're not going to petition to vacate the alley or to rezone their property. And I don't, I, with that, we would respectfully request that you go ahead and vote tonight and let us move forward with the project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Has Davis, or Mr. Mosted, come on up.
Uh, Gene Mosted, one of the property owners, um. Another thing I'd like to highlight is that we have spent extensive time on trying to work this out, and we talked to council, we talked to staff, and everyone told us absolutely not on the alley vacation a long time ago. And we're just, you know, if we thought that there was any kind of way to do it, we would have done it a long time ago. But we were told by everyone, absolutely not, including Gwen Jones. Um, so I don't know why, um, it just seems like a waste of time for us to go back back to committee now. Like Dan says, we're not gonna see anything new, and we've, we've tried everything we can with this. All we want to do is go on, and um, I've been developing in Missoula for a long time, and it continually gets more frustrating because it just gets harder and harder to get things done in this town. We we looked at the comp plan, we tried to look at all of the avenues to come up to get all of our bases covered so we could have the predictability that we want as uh, developers in developing properties. All we want is predictability and some common sense with it. And when it, we just kept getting pushed, pushed off, especially when we spent this much time trying to make this thing work. I just don't understand why we need to do another week, because we're not going to get anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, couple things, um, first, last summer, last year, whatever, the collaborative effort did not have my wife and I spending enormous resources on the vacation petition, nor nor converting two of our homes to deed restricted affordable at great expense to us. What was happening then was the beneficiaries of this zoning change were pursuing that. Um, it it was actually suggested from staff at least once that the vacation could proceed if these guys provided a couple of affordable units. I don't remember the number, but it was, it was proposed. That was rejected by them. And so my wife and I stepped up to the plate and said, you know, we can do this. We have these two modest units. We can make this work, and we've been spending the time and money to make this work. My wife did not say that we're not interested in proceeding. What we said is, we're tapped out. We've spent way too much money. And when you look at that staff report, we need some kind of hail Mary here that would say this body, everybody involved wants the win-win. We want the extra units, we want the affordable units. We're actually, if our petition succeeds, the city actually gains square footage of public access in perpetuity. So these gentlemen have, their site plan allows a a permanent public easement for a similar right of way, which adds no additional points of contact to the surrounding streets. Um, and we agreed to do a ten foot wide utility easement in perpetuity that is entirely on us and our neighbors, a no build zone that's on us. Their ten feet, we agreed to to say that they can, that can be a build zone, and they end up putting their their buildings literally right on top of us. Why does that make sense to us? You limit all the impacts of that through street. And from public standpoint, they would be building some large percentage of their units on what's going to end up being, and Cassie can respond to this if she's still here, what's going to end up being the five hundred year floodplain at the B F E, rather than filling all of the land that is currently two feet below the B F E and going two feet above that per city floodplain code. Um, a couple of points to address, um, regarding the floodplain. Yes, of course, there's ways to build in the floodplain. My wife and I have built several structures in the floodplain, going through the process. The plan that's on the table here, though, is to fill, completely fill, the lowest area of the entire block. And so what does that mean? Is it allowed? Potentially, it could be allowed, but what happens if you actually have the hundred year flood is you've just taken away this enormous area that could be flood mitigation, that now the water's got to go somewhere. Well, where's it going to go? I can't, I haven't done the modeling, but it's going to go on their neighbors, is what's going to happen. So it's not a non-issue. The floodplain is a real issue, and perhaps they will succeed in in uh, getting a permit filled for that. The other thing, and Spencer, I'd like like it if you could respond to this. You suggested that the twenty nine thousand square feet allows them to build one unit. This is some, in some ways, a minor point. You could read it a couple ways. You could say, well, they bought property that allows one unit on it. I think city policy now allows an A D U, so they bought property that allows two units on it. Um, and you're 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 suggesting or considering changing the zoning to allow twenty nine units. And we don't actually know that this is, that their plan is what's going to happen. There's nothing stopping them, if you vote for this today, from selling this to another developer who cares even less about the surrounding neighbors than the current owners, if you pass the zoning change. So, but I I, Spencer, my understanding is they have three individual parcels that have three lots each on them, which would allow the R twenty zoning to permit one unit per lot and one A D U per city council policy, uh, passed maybe in the last year. And now there's a state law that just, I believe, was signed that allows duplexes on every parcel regardless of zoning. So two units plus an A D U, that's nine units. I I totally could be entirely wrong, but that was my understanding of um, kind of the situation that they have. If there was no change to the zoning or anything else, there would be the potential for nine units there. And I know that's not related to the alley, it's related to the to the zoning change, but nine units or six or whatever is certainly more in keeping with the current character of the neighborhood than what's being proposed, and for sure, what would be allowed if this zoning change passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Kirby.
Uh, Jay Kirby, I'm one of the owners of the property in question. A couple of things, uh, we don't propose to fill that whole site. We are going to fill our uh, where our units are up to two feet above the new floodplain, which is about six inches higher than what the original floodplain, which we're still working under, is. And also, um, uh, the fact that, um, here I go again. I'll just say, uh, um, that the floodplain issue is not a, um, is not really an issue because we're not going to be filling that whole site. There'll be spaces in between- There'll be spaces in between the units. And also, uh, in the alley, we will have a, we'll have a lowered area for drainage and so, the, we won't be filling above the whole site. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right, um.
Couple of things I wanted to add. Um, there's been a lot of talk about the growth plan and the downtown master plan. But there's also another, uh, public document called the neighborhood plan that is in direct conflict with those public, um, documents. And I also want to add that the downtown master plan, um, I know for a fact there was a lot of public comment about changing the zoning on this block because of floodplain issues. And they were just ignored when that was adopted as a, a public planning document. So, um, there's, I don't remember exactly who commented, but I believe there are representatives from the nonprofit environmental community who had real concerns about the floodplain issues. Um, I also, if there's an opportunity and Cassie's still on, maybe she could pull up the floodplain maps just to show that the alley right-of-way is significantly higher than the rest of that block. Um, but we know that we've looked at them and there's new maps coming out that are even, I believe, um, give a even better picture of, of, I don't know exactly when those maps will be adopted, but, um, by FEMA. But they, um, show even more extreme, I believe, don't quote me on that. But maybe you can look at them on your own time if Cassie isn't available to pull them up. Um, I would just encourage council to give it another week and take some time to read the information that, uh, my husband Doug sent this afternoon. And, uh, look at the links and look at the planning, the neighborhood planning document. And, um, reach out to us if you have questions or want to verify any of the information in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else on the, on public comment on the motion. Uh, any additional committee or council discussion on the motion before the body? Ms. Anderson?
Thanks so much. I just wanted to explain my objection, um, to this. I, um, don't think that anything new and substantial is going to come in between now and whenever we hear this again. Um, I think what, we're kind of drifting off course because in front of us is a rezone request. And there's been lots of talk about an alleyway vacation and, and, you know, working together for the neighborhood. And that all may still very much happen, but that's not actually what's in front of us right now. It is simply just the rezoning. And if we approve the rezoning today, all of the talks that have been ongoing up until this point in time could absolutely continue. But what the difference is, it does allow the developer to begin to build the first portion of their units as, um, as their site plan lays out. And the sooner they get those built, the sooner that there are families who are going to be able to move into those places. Um, the growth policy and the master, the downtown master plan looked at this area as a place for more density and that's why there's the recommendation. And that is why Spencer in his presentation highlighted the fact that this is all in compliance with our growth policy, with the downtown master plan, that this is an area that is ripe for more dense building. And you can see that there is more density immediately around this particular parcel. So we're talking about the rezone and, and as much as I would love for a, um, side conversations with staff and the appropriate legal processes for all of that to happen and eventually come back in front of us, that's not actually what's in front of us. Um, the floodplain administrator has said that this particular, uh, project that is in front of us is, you know, compliant with the floodplain. Um, I don't think that's gonna change in the next week. Um, you know, the growth policy is consistent with growth policy. Um, you know, all the boxes that we are legally supposed to check and look at in considering a rezone have been walked through. And I don't think any of those are going to change. And where I feel that the reason why we're at the eleventh hour getting a petition to deny the zoning is not necessarily because of the project itself. It's because of whatever was said in the staff report last week, having to do with the alley vacation, which is not in front of us. And that the, uh, folks who are in the middle of negotiating that did not like whatever that said. And that's unfortunate, but that's not actually what's in front of us. And it's not going to change between now and next week. And so I just think that there's nothing new that is going to be learned. I feel like we've had our questions answered. We had a lot of time in committee last week that we did not utilize to the full extent, asking all these questions. And that we are in the position where we are today because of the issues and the concerns and the discussion and the unhappiness around the alleyway vacation, which is not the rezoning request, which is in front of us right now. So that is why I objected, which I normally don't agree with Ms. Jones, but, um, to have, you know, just, we need to discuss and, and this discussion about the rezone this evening. Because I feel like we have adequate information to make this decision. And we should let the developers begin to develop this so that housing in, you know, four hundred thousand dollars is a heck of a lot of money. And there's a debatability about whether or not that's affordable housing in Montana or Missoula. But it is housing that people will be able to move into sooner rather than later. And we're in the middle of building season. So those are the factors I'm taking into consideration when making my decisions tonight. So I encourage all the rest of you to do that as well.
Ms. Becerra?
I, I think Ms. Anderson covered everything, but my question, we might, I just want a clarification on, um, can staff verify the, the zoning protest today? If, if, what is the process for that? Because I want to make sure that, um, everyone, for any project that we have seen in the past, when we have received a protest, there is a time for verification. I, I concur that we're not gonna see anything new. My main reason for potentially supporting having this in committee has only to do with allowing staff the right amount of time to verify that the, uh, the protest is valid. And so can someone just tell me that we can vote on this and allow staff the necessary time to do that verification? Cause I think this project, like any other project, deserves at least, um, you know, the, the amount of staff time to ensure that, um, that that protest is valid.
Mr. Stark or Ms. Raybin?
I've kind of said what I know about this process. I'm gonna defer to planning staff because I don't have the ability to map the protests to determine if they're within the hundred and fifty-foot radius that's prescribed by the statutes to determine if it's valid tonight. And I don't know if they do.
Um, so a, and I think so there are, um, ten parcels within that hundred and fifty-feet, uh, area. They, um, Mr. Doug Hoss Davis, uh, combined, uh, is part owner in one and owns two others. And he, um, Ms. Eva Dawn, I'm sorry, Proberg, uh, is, um, part owner in the other, so that'd be three parcels. The test or the, um, threshold would be twenty-five percent. And so three of ten is thirty percent. So alone, um, the two people in this room have the necessary parcels to, uh, valid, um, you know, protest, um, or validate the, the petition. However, we typically go through a process of looking at a map and comparing that to our GIS data and then collecting ownership data and verifying the owners are, uh, in fact, owners of the parcel. And so there's, we go through a typical process, but at the same time, there are three parcels uh, here stating their, um, uh, protest of, of, uh, the rezone and that would satisfy that twenty-five percent.
Do you have a follow-up?
Uh, well, I guess my follow-up would be for Jim or someone, um, who can tell us, can we vote on this tonight? Um, with the verification that staff has done just now? Or do we need to wait in order to have a legal and valid vote per the, the, um, rezone protest? I just want to make sure we're not doing something that's gonna be even more of a conflict later.
If the staff is confident that their analysis has determined that there's thirty percent, what the protest requires is written protest by at least twenty-five percent of the lot owners who are within one hundred and fifty-feet radius of the property that's being rezoned. I'm not sure if I heard Spencer say that everything he looked at was within one hundred and fifty feet. But if he's accurate and you assume he's accurate, he says thirty percent, it would mean that you need a two-thirds vote of those present and voting, which would mean six votes if all nine city council members who are present, uh, vote in favor. If it turns out that, uh, they weren't within a hundred and fifty feet and they, all the signatures were not valid because they weren't within the protest zone, then it would be five votes. But it sounds like Spencer's confident that the requirement for two-thirds is now on the table and you can go ahead and vote because you have staff verifying to the best of their ability on the fly here that, uh, there are sufficient votes to make it a twenty-five percent protest and require two-thirds of the city council members present and voting to approve the project rezoning.
Okay. I, I see your hand, Mr. Cedarburg. I, we, we generally do public comment once per item. Um, if, I, I'll open it to everyone if you, if you do want to, if you do want to make another comment. Um, but, but I'll just, uh, in the interest of getting all the information out on the floor, on the floor. Go ahead.
Dan Cedarburg, one of the owners. And in the interest of, um, moving this along, we would stipulate that the protest is valid, valid. Uh, we, we, we want you to vote tonight. We don't want it to be hung up. Uh, Ms. Becerra's concerns, we want to address those. We've attempted to, to cooperate all the way along. We would do that.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else want to, um, add any comment? Okay. On the motion to, uh, refer back to committee, Mr. Curly, no?
I just wanted to clarify real quick about Mason's rules, cause I thought, um, when a public hearing has just concluded for council rule fourteen, any one council member can send it back to committee. And then if we didn't want to send it back to committee, then we would have to vote to suspend the rules. So I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so, so Ms. Raybin, um, can fill in some color here, but we, we, we closed the public hearing last week and that was something that I was told, corrected and, and told to do because it was going back to committee last week. So, um, that, uh, that's the interpretation is that the, is that the public hearing is, is closed. Um, and so that's, um, that's, uh, Ms. Ray, Ms. Raybin, is that, is that your interpretation?
Yeah, there's one shot for one council person to send an item back to committee after the hearing. Uh, at this juncture, because you're taking a committee recommendation, there's been a committee conversation about it. It's not like there wasn't an, it, the, the opportunity and the rules is to generate the conversation that happened in LUP last week, that one person can make that happen. So that opportunity is closed. So now to return to committee, it takes a majority vote. Um, and then I'll just note that, uh, based on Mr. Cedarburg's statement and, uh, staff, uh, planning staff and I have been looking at the petitions and it, it looks like we do have a protest this evening. And, uh, it's valid and it would, so in order for this rezoning to be approved, it will need a two-thirds vote of the council members present and voting this evening. You have nine council members, uh, who are here. And, uh, so that will be a, Jim, is that a six, six to, six affirmative votes in order to pass rather than five? Yes.
Uh, Ms. Anderson? I'm sorry, Mr. Curly, are you done or?
Um, yeah, should we do comments now on the motion too or?
Uh, you can, yeah, you can go ahead, I think.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, since we just got this, um, protest petition, it's great that we can verify that it's valid now. Um, but I do think like going into these public, I mean, going into voting on these things, it's nice to have all council members to review all the materials that we got and looking at that fourteen-page paper. I think it would be, it would make sense for us all to have time to review it. So I think another week would be fine, um, in my opinion, without keeping this in committee for one more week. Uh, whether or not, um, we agree with the protest or not, I think it'd be worth just having time to make sure that we can review all documents.
Anyone else on the motion? Mr. Nugent?
Thanks, Mr. Ware. Um, the, it's, it seems to me that this conversation is going on for years. And, um, I'm a bit frustrated because it, it seems like councils, obviously, they'll last to know about a lot of things. And sometimes that's the way the rules work. Um, and that's all fine. But I think there's, there's a lot of frustration among council based on things we knew and didn't know and conversations we weren't a part of and part of, and I think that that's all valid. Um, that being said, I, I, we have a, a rezone in front of us that complies with the growth policy as amended, that's been adopted by a previous version of this body. I don't, I don't know what we're gonna learn in the next week that changes that fact. And just hearing some of the current zoning requirements, uh, one unit per twenty thousand square feet is crazy for that location. It doesn't match anything that most everybody on this council has stated is a, um, a goal of, of encouraging infill and, and bringing this stuff into, um, a little bit more modern land use. My concern is if we send this back to committee, there's nothing new to talk about in committee. Especially if the concern tonight, especially if the protest is valid and we need to meet the two-thirds majority tonight to vote. Um, I will say though, that my worry is if we vote tonight on the rezone, are people going to not support it because they want more time to talk about it, which then throws the whole thing off? Um, and I, I, that's just a concern of mine. But I don't, I don't think we should send this back to committee. I, I think we have, we've stated that we have a growth policy. We've stated that we've got a process that we want these things to happen and that we always find reasons not to follow it. And I think that can be very frustrating for a lot of people. But one of the things that we've stated in our, in our code reform process and all that is we're trying to create predictability. And nothing about this process has been predictable for anybody. And I think that that's a very frustrating thing. Um, and I would speak for a lot of people in council saying us as well. So I'm gonna vote to, uh, not put it back to committee and keep it vote tonight.
Thanks. Anyone else? Ms. Sher?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to add in, um, I agree with, uh, many of my colleagues' comments. Um, but specifically, you know, Ms. Anderson, I, I don't think this is, this is not of, and I said that at the beginning, this is, this is not about the alley vacation. This is about a rezone of this specific property. That is what is in, in front of this body. Um, I also agree with, um, Ms. Becerra's concerns around the validity of the protest. But if we're going to say that it is going to require a two-thirds vote, if, if we've accepted that, um, I'm comfortable going forward. I, that was my question, that, you know, are we gonna do a, a fifty percent or, or two-thirds vote? If we're going to do it as a, if we're gonna accept it as a valid, um, a valid protest, we're gonna do a two-thirds vote there. I don't think there's any additional information we're gonna get by, by sending it back to committee. Um, and I think we need to vote on, on this proper, this rezone of this property without the alley vacation, because that is not what's in front of us. I mean, we need to vote on what's in front of us. And I think we have a responsibility to vote for what's in front of us. And I agree that, that it sounds like this has been going on, um, for longer than I've Um for longer than I've been in- involved with council and many of us on this body right now. So um. I do hope for everyone involved that we are able, as we go through this code reform and as we really look at what has hindered. Um some of this development and frustrated some neighbors. Um in the process that we improve that. I I'm I think. This has not really been a great process. It doesn't sound like for uh for either side and so. Um but I am going to uh not vote to send it back to committee and um vote to move forward tonight.
Anyone else? Ms. Becerra.
Um I agree. My concern about it um I think has been um addressed that um. We can validate the the protest and with that I. Um I don't see a reason for us to send it back to committee. I think um everyone has said what. What I think it's to be um the case, which is what's before us is a reason like. Many of the other ones that we have had in the past. And I share in the frustration with Mr. Nugent. There are many conversations that have taken place outside of these chambers regarding an alley vacation. That we have no control over as it relates to this rezone. Um so I hope that those communications continue to happen. I I hope that there's a way to make both of these projects happen. I think that there could be. Um but right now what's before us is just the rezone and I, you know, with with. Ensuring that the protest is is valid and confirmed by our staff, then I don't see a reason for delaying the process any further.
Okay, um I don't have anyone else in the queue. So on the motion on the the motion on the floor is to refer this back to committee and we can have a roll call vote.
Okay, and just so everybody from the public is clear, the motion to return to committee can pass with a simple majority. Um it's the rezoning that takes the super majority. So we're voting right now on returning this matter to Landis and Planning Committee. And we start this round of voting with Kontos.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
No.
Cheryl.
No.
Fesica.
No.
Anderson.
No.
Becerra.
No.
Carlinow.
Yes.
Okay, uh that's four yeses and five no's. So the motion to return to committee does not pass.
Okay, um so then in terms of um addressing the motion tonight, uh Mr. Nugent. I I'll take a motion from you, please.
The uh staff recommend uh recommendation for the motion is to adopt ordinance to rezone the subject property located at the corner of Idaho Street, Nineteenth Street. And legally described as lots four through twelve and block seven of the Eddie Edition located in section twenty-one uh T thirteen north, R nineteen west, P M M. From R twenty residential twenty to B two dash two community business based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law on the staff report.
Uh on the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, we can have a roll call vote on the motion.
Okay, and this motion requires a two-thirds vote of those present in voting in order to pass. Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Fesica.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra.
Yes.
Carlinow.
Yes.
Kontos.
No.
All right, any of you like to change your vote? Eight eyes and one nay.
Right.
And passes, I think.
The motion passes. Um I want to acknowledge the collaborative spirit that has emerged here, and I want to acknowledge that um. This outcome is uh a mixed bag for the folks in the room, and I I just want to thank everyone for engaging in the process. Um. We have some public hearings. We have. We have two public hearings um and we can take those in the order um in the order they are listed um. And our first one is um. A proposal from Paradigm Architecture on behalf of the YMCA in Missoula County for the parcel at three thousand Russell Street. Uh to vary from zoning code requirements. And we have Charlie Green here with our staff report.
Hi, um I'm Charlie. My pronouns are they/them. I'm an assistant planner in Community Planning Development and Innovation. Community Planning Development and Innovation has received notice from Paradigm Three Architecture on behalf of the YMCA. Of their intent to renovate their existing facility at three thousand Russell Street and construct two additional buildings on the same parcel. At twenty-nine hundred and twenty-nine fifty Russell Street. The proposed project includes the installation of six signs, the repaving and restriping of the parking lot. The renovation of the main building, the construction of an airnasium or open-air gym, and the demolition and construction of a childcare facility. The landowner, Missoula County, is a government agency under the state of Montana, and city council is authorized to hold a public hearing. When an agency proposes to develop or use public land contrary to Title twenty zoning regulations, the public hearing is known as a public forum. The YMCA of Missoula is located at three thousand Russell Street, west of Playfair Park and east of Opportunity Resources. The maroon star marks the location of the existing main building. The parcel is zoned A P O P three, public lands and institutional. Parcels located to the northeast and south of the YMCA are zoned O P three, public lands and institutional. The parcels west of the subject property are zoned C one four. The land use designation of the YMCA and Playfair Park is public and quasi-public. This designation is for land with structures or uses such as schools, airports, community buildings, cemeteries, and utility facilities. Land currently owned by public agencies or held in reserve for future development or public facilities also receive this designation. Surrounding land use designations include neighborhood mixed use and residential medium. There are parks and recreation, religious assembly, eating and drinking establishment. Business support services and single-dwelling residential uses surrounding the YMCA. The surrounding uses are compatible with the land use designation outlined in the growth policy. Title twenty, section twenty eighty-five oh zero oh. Zero nine five states that government agencies. May propose to use public land contrary to local zoning regulations. Whenever an agency proposes to use public land contrary to local zoning regulations, a public hearing must be held to allow for a comment on the proposed use. And the agency shall attend the public hearing. City council does not have the power to deny or condition the request. This means there will not be a vote on the item. The YMCA may move forward with the proposal following the public forum. However, the YMCA and Missoula County may consider comment. Title twenty defines agency as a board, bureau, commission, department, and authority or other entity of the state or local government. Missoula County is considered a local government agency and is permitted to vary from zoning through the public forum process. This is a site plan of the proposed project. The new childcare facility is proposed to have the use classification daycare center of thirteen children or more. A daycare center of thirteen children or more is not a permitted use in the O P three public lands and institutional zoning. Per title twenty twenty dash dot twenty dot O two O. Allowed uses. There is currently an existing building with the daycare. Center thirteen plus use on the site. The existing daycare center will be demolished and a new childcare facility will be constructed. Title twenty twenty seventy-five O five O states. One wall sign per building with a maximum area of twelve square feet and a maximum height of six feet is permitted. There will be six signs in total, five wall signs, and one window sign. Here is the proposed placement for the three wall signs. On the west and east facades of the main YMCA facility, an existing building that is being renovated. Here is the proposed placement for the two signs on the north and west facades of the new childcare facility and for the placement. Of the sign on the west facade of the new airnasium. There will be four signs facing west towards Russell Street. There will be one sign facing north and one sign facing east towards Playfair Park. The wall sign on the west facade of the main building facing Russell will be three hundred and seventy-five square feet in area. And twenty-one feet eight inches tall from finished grade to the top of the sign. The sign will be externally illuminated from above. The sign consists of channel letters on a cedar siding. Background shaped like a mountain motif because the siding is a main material change from the building. This area is included in the measurement of the sign square footage. A window sign has been proposed on the western facade of the existing facility facing Russell Street in addition to the three hundred and seventy-five square foot wall sign. Permanent window signs on the second story are permitted only for businesses which do not have ground floor space. The YMCA has ground floor space, so a second-story window sign would not normally be permitted. The window sign will be sixty-five square feet and on the second floor of the building. The sign spans four panes of glass. Thirty-one percent on the upper left pane, fifty percent on the upper right pane, twenty-six on the lower left pane, and thirty-one percent of the lower right pane of glass. There is an existing wall sign on the main building which will be moved to the east facade facing Playfair Park. It will be thirty-six square feet in area. And twenty-one feet tall from finished grade to the top of the sign. A wall sign proposed to be on the new airnasium will be one hundred and or one hundred and eighty square feet in area. And twenty-one feet two inches tall from finished grade to the top of the sign. The wall sign proposed to be on the west facade of the new childcare facility will be one hundred and ninety square feet in area. And nine feet tall from finished grade to the top of the sign. The sign will be externally illuminated from above. The wall sign on the north facade will be two hundred and eighty square feet in area and fifteen feet nine inches from finished grade to the top of the sign. The sign will be externally illuminated from above. Both signs consist of channel letters on a cedar siding background. Because the siding is a change of material from the building, this area is also included in the measurement of the sign square footage. Per title twenty, table twenty sixty dash one, the required vehicle parking spaces for the existing and added uses is one hundred and forty-eight spaces. There are ninety-seven spaces provided on the property and sixty-two spaces provided on a lot leased from the city of Missoula to the south of the subject parcel. For a total of one hundred and fifty-nine spaces. The required number of spaces is not provided on the YMCA site, and there is not a filed parking agreement in place for the spaces leased from the city. For this reason, zoning requirements for parking are not met. Per title twenty, tables twenty sixty dash two. The number of required long-term bicycle spaces, bicycle parking is five spaces. There will be none provided. The number of required short-term bicycle spaces is fifteen. There will be ten provided. Per title twenty twenty dot sixty-five dot O two O. The required general landscape area is fifteen percent of the parcel area. The required area for this parcel is nine twenty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-six square feet. The provided landscape area is forty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-two square feet, which does comply with zoning code. The general landscaping requirement is one tree and six shrubs per one thousand square feet of general required general landscaping. The required number of trees is thirty. The general landscaping requirement for shrubs is one hundred and seventy-eight. There are twenty-two trees in the proposed landscape plan. There are thirteen shrubs in the proposed landscape plan. Per title twenty twenty sixty-five O three O, the site is required to have two trees and six shrubs per one thousand square feet of street frontage. For a required total of eleven trees and thirty-six shrubs. There are eleven existing trees and no existing shrubs in the tr- street frontage. There will be no trees or shrubs added for a total of eleven trees and zero shrubs in the street frontage. Title twenty twenty sixty-five O four O requires one scape landscape island. Every one hundred and thirty-five feet for a total of sixteen landscape islands. Title twenty. Twenty sixty-five O four O requires one deciduous tree. Per landscape island, and they are to be planted with ground cover. The parking lot will be repaved and restriped with the same layout as the existing parking lot. The existing landscaping islands will not be planted with trees or ground cover. The true the two proposed landscape islands near the new childcare facility will be planted with one tree each, but will not meet the ground cover standards of twenty sixty-five O four O. Title twenty twenty sixty-five O five O requires a buffer of berms, walls, or plantings at least thirty-six inches in height along the length of the. Parking area frontage or a street-fronting landscape area with a minimum depth of twenty feet with the density of plantings of two trees and six shrubs. Per one thousand square feet of required area. Neither of these standards will be met. Title twenty twenty sixty-five O seven O requires ground-mounted equipment to be screened from use of streets. This requirement will not be met. There will be unscreened ground-mounted mechanical equipment between the main building and new childcare facility. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, this uh this commences our statutory required public hearing um for a project that we can. Uh exert no influence over. So if anyone would like to comment on this, you're welcome to. And um I will note that Heather Foster from the YMCA is here and um. And Heather, is there anything you'd like to add before before we start public comment?
No, I don't think so. We're anxious to hear if there's any public comment, and we're um really excited about this project. So we're just grateful for your time.
Okay, so with that, I'd open the public hearing. And noting no one in the room nor anyone online. Jumping up, I will take the opportunity to be a cheerleader for the YMCA and what a great project this is. Um and despite the fact that we don't have any um action uh before us from a zoning standpoint, uh this is. Um this is really going to be a a wonderful addition to Midtown and um a wonderful. Uh expansion of YMCA services and modernization of the services and particularly um exciting opportunity to expand childcare services. So. Um I'm grateful for the project and um I have no comment on your deviation from the number of shrubs that you are required to point. Anyone else state for comment? Um Mr. Nugent.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I would actually ask Ms. Foster to just let us know how much money this capital campaign has raised so far.
We've raised about fourteen. With the goal of nineteen, so we are. Uh getting closer and closer to achieving this whole master.
You I I think the million part of that didn't come through the audio very well here.
Yeah, would you say that again?
Million. Fourteen million uh dollars. We are with a goal of eighteen million. So we're we're getting close.
Few few follow-ups, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Nugent. And um could you give us actual numbers on the on the number of. Children you serve in childcare now and the number that this expansion will let you serve, I guess, rough numbers, but.
Sure, cur- currently on our main campus, we have about five. Five years old, that's six weeks to five years old. Um this will bring us up over a hundred kids on our campus. In total, we have well over a hundred and thirty-six kids a day and. And about. And after school. Hundred and kids a day in summer camp, which is just around the corner.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate you answering those questions for me. I do have comments if now's the time.
Go ahead.
All right, um I I um. I think this is awesome. I I wanted her to say the fourteen million because I think that's incredible and it's all privately um raised and I. I think it's important to note that. You know, public funds can't do everything. It's important for private organizations to be involved, and the YMCA is doing a tremendous job of. Of leading the way on this, and I'm actively trying to brainstorm other ways the city can help um. Get this project closer to their their finish line. You know, I have family members that utilize the childcare. I um I see the stuff after school. My. My daughter's actually signed up for after-school care next year through the YMCA, and we are thrilled to see this all moving forward. And I do want to note that there were a lot of exceptions listed in the report, and none of them bother me at all. And I think maybe that's something that we should consider as other projects come forward. I've never driven past the Y and thought that it looks under landscaped or anything like that. And I just, I think that this is maybe a lesson for us on that. And I just really appreciate this project. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Nugent. Anyone else? Ms. Jones?
I will just briefly chime in. I'm fine with the approach on all of this and the project that you brought forward. I just wanted to comment that great job raising funds. And we've gone to the YMCA for the last 20 years, and it is the most wonderful culture created at the YMCA that is completely accepting and inclusive. And I've always loved that about that project, about that facility. And it just is a wonderful addition to Missoula. Everyone feels welcome there, no matter what their circumstances or any factors. It's very inclusive, and I think that's why you've had such good luck raising money. So thank you for all that you do for Missoula.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. I also want to thank Charlie for the thorough staff report and appreciate the zoning review. It is important, despite this process being awkward, it is important for us to understand how projects deviate. So thank you for that. And to Heather Foster, best of luck in the remaining portion of the campaign. Would council like a brief recess? We have one more public hearing. Okay. Okay, we can keep moving on then to our next public hearing. And this is the conditional use interim ordinance extension. And Jen Grass is here with our staff report.
Good evening, members. I'm going to share my screen. How's that? So again, good evening. For the record, I am Jen Grass of Community Planning, Development, and Innovation. And tonight, we are doing a public hearing to consider the adoption of an, excuse me, to consider adopting an ordinance to extend interim ordinance 3705, which is the Conditional Use Urgency Interim Zoning Ordinance. I'll include background of how we adopted the Conditional Use Interim Ordinance. I'll cover comments and new information received during the past six months. And then I'll ask you to adopt an ordinance extending the Conditional Use Interim Ordinance for another 12 months. So state law provides for an interim urgency ordinance through section 76 to 306 and allows a municipality to determine when urgency ordinance is necessary to protect public safety, health, and welfare. This section also allows the urgency ordinance to be extended twice for 12 months each time after a two-thirds majority vote of city council. So this is a procedural process to extend the existing interim Conditional Use Ordinance for one year prior to its expiration on May 28. The Conditional Use Interim Ordinance was approved by council November 28, 2022 as an urgency ordinance to be in effect for six months. The ordinance proposed to shift many existing conditional uses throughout various zoning districts to permitted based on specific considerations and assumptions. And these changes were proposed to help provide a more effective delivery of city services by freeing up staff time to review and approve housing and support services to support a safe and healthy community. It was meant to improve on and provide increased capacity for ongoing operations as well as provide an interim solution while the city studies and contemplates broader amendments to improve review process efficiencies through the code reform project. The city of Missoula continues to face historic levels of development review, causing backlogs and delays that are directly and indirectly impacting our ability to move key priorities like residential projects forward. As a reminder, the zoning code includes three basic use designations: permitted by right, unpermitted, which we generally call prohibited, and conditional. Conditional uses are intended to provide a transparent public review process for land uses that because of their widely varying design and operational characteristics require a case-by-case review in order to determine whether they'll be compatible with surrounding uses and development patterns. Uses are reviewed by certain criteria found in Title 20 and approved by city council after a public hearing. When Title 20 was adopted in 2009, it included 49 use types that depending on which zoning district they occurred in may be conditional. In 2019, two of those uses were removed from the Conditional Use process. And in November of 2022, the adopted interim ordinance reduced the number of conditional uses to 28, with 13 of those being changed to permitted in some districts. Based on applying the criteria and assumptions noted on the previous slide, we landed on three categories of amendments: changing some uses from conditional to permitted in each district it was listed; changing some uses from conditional to permitted in some districts; and not changing some uses that are conditional at all. And as noted previously, this resulted in a final total of 28 conditional uses across all zoning districts. Again, with 13 of those being permitted in some districts they were previously conditional in. The following slides generally show the conditional uses included in the original ordinance. Each slide indicates which of three categories each conditional use ended up in. No changes are being suggested with this extension. We went into detail for the original presentation, so again, I'm not going to repeat that tonight, but I will answer questions if you have any later on. The first category are those uses that were changed to permitted in every district that use was listed as conditional. This slide continues the list of changed to permitted in every district it was listed as conditional. This category are those uses that were changed to permitted in some of the districts they were listed as conditional while remaining conditional in others. The changes only apply to the zoning districts the use originally appeared in, and uses were not added to or deleted from other zoning districts. And this list continues with those uses that were permitted in some of the districts they were listed as conditional. The next two slides are the final category and are those uses that remained conditional and unchanged. They also included these uses. This is a list of projects staff is aware of that were either removed from the Conditional Use process because the interim ordinance was adopted or will benefit from the extension of this ordinance. Because the interim Conditional Use Ordinance was adopted, staff was able to immediately remove two projects from the Conditional Use process and review them through the regular permitting process. And as of this report, there are five proposed projects staff is aware of that will benefit from the continuation of the Conditional Use Interim Ordinance. These are in various stages of process, and we'd like them to continue to benefit from the change by extending the ordinance. In addition, removing each of these projects from the Conditional Use process allows staff to work on other projects, helping to forward housing and support services and provide for a more effective delivery of city services. In addition, six months is just not sufficient time to develop the policy direction in alignment with the code reform project, draft potential alternatives, and pursue amendments through the process of agency review, planning board recommendations, and city council considerations. Between January and May, April of this year, 20 subdivision requests were received. And as receipt of this information, 14 of those subdivisions are in various stages of process. In addition, there are 32 non-subdivision-related projects in various stages of completion. So as you can see, we continue to have a large backlog of projects, and our season is just beginning. This interim urgency ordinance extension was advertised in the Missoulian for two weeks, and we provided pre-public hearing information at the Land Use and Planning Committee last Wednesday. Staff has continued to monitor the Engage Missoula webpage since the adoption of the interim ordinance. And as of the Land Use and Planning Committee, we have received two comments. The first was added in April and didn't include information relevant to the Conditional Use project. The second was received in May and was generally in favor of the city slowing things down. Both comments are posted in Escribe. An additional third comment was received this afternoon, asking the council to extend the interim ordinance. The comment expressed an interest in providing shelter for about 35 families and daycare for young children to help meet a community need. They say the ordinance will allow more flexibility to provide comprehensive support for their clients. And the full comment can be read and found on the city council email, and then it'll be added to Escribe at a later date. If the interim ordinance is extended, comments will continue to be gathered, and the Engage Missoula webpage will continue to be monitored. The staff recommends that council adopt an ordinance extending the Conditional Use Interim Urgency Ordinance for another 12 months. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Grass. And this is... Are we holding this open until next week?
No, no, we need to do a vote tonight, please.
Because it's the, okay. All right. So with that, I will open the public hearing to start then, if anyone wants to make a comment. See, we'll do the public hearing first. So seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and now a question from Ms. Jordan.
All right, thank you. Jen, that was a really good presentation, but I have to admit, I understood some of it, but not all of it. I think it was slide eight or nine. It might have been slide eight. Could you just pull that one back up really quickly if you can?
Yeah, give me one second, please. Let's see. I closed it down so I could take notes. Okay, I'm sorry, which slide? Seven?
Eight.
Eight.
Okay, so just making sure I understand this one. This is it. So change to permitted in some districts currently conditional. I'm looking specifically at the emergency homeless shelter designation and wondering which districts will this affect?
Okay, let me pull that document up real quick. Emergency homeless shelters some districts. So for emergency homeless shelter, the change is going to be in the C1, the C2, and the M1. That'll be permitted. And then it's going to remain conditional in the B district, all the B districts, the central business district, the M1R, and the OP3.
Okay, I'm gonna have to get out the zoning map to have a closer look, but thank you for answering my question.
Thanks. Additional questions? Seeing none, Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The council adopts an ordinance extending ordinance 3705 for one year. Ordinance 3705 is an interim urgent zoning measure prohibiting the application of the Conditional Use process to certain use categories by amending Title 20, Missoula City's zoning code, Section 20.05 entitled residential districts, Section 20.10 entitled business and commercial districts, Section 20.15 entitled industrial and manufacturing districts, and Section 20.20 entitled open space, public, and aviation districts pursuant to Montana Municipal Interim Zoning Statute, Section 76-2-306 MCA.
Thanks, the motion's in order. Any comments or discussions tonight? Seeing, Ms. Basara?
I just want to thank Jen and everyone at CPDI for doing a really thorough job at looking at how these changes could potentially affect different parts of the community and kind of anticipating what we might see because of these changes. And I really appreciate that level of detail to ensure that, you know, some of these changes are appropriate in the different zoning districts. So thanks.
Yeah, thanks. And I'd agree that I think these are really very important interim changes to our code that really do have the effect of building capacity for reviewing projects. So when we're short-staffed with planners, when we have a backlog of projects, when we have constraints beyond our control, these measures really do help us review housing projects and other projects in a more expeditious way. And appreciate, Jen, I appreciate your thorough staff report as always. And seeing no additional comment, we can have a roll call vote on the motion.
Okay, on the ordinance, Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Basika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Carlina?
Yes.
Kontos?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
That is nine eyes and zero names and passes.
All right. We have no additional public hearings tonight, nor do we have any items under committee reports, nor do we have any items of new business, communications from the mayor. I'll simply say that I think we have a long-running tradition in this body, in these chambers, of encouraging dissent and encouraging people to come in and provide comment. We've had a number of meetings with uncomfortable topics that we've all sat through. We've had people who disagree, and that's a good thing. That's how our system works. We are on this table frequently disagree, and that's also a good thing. And our decisions are better because of it. What is not good is loud or threatening or abusive language. What is not good is from our rules, impugning the motives of people on the body or members of our staff using loud, threatening, abusive, indecent, or profane language or conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a meeting. And I just want to state very clearly that I am very much in support of civil discourse. I'm very much in support of dialogue, and civil being the operative word there. And so I appreciate everyone. I want to convey to members of the public that this is a safe space to come down and comment, and we will do our best to maintain that safe space. And we can start our comments for council members with Ms. Anderson tonight.
I'll pass, thanks.
Ms. Jones?
Operative button to turn on here. Yeah, I just wanted to add to that along the same vein. I've been thinking a lot tonight about, I think we are all very cautious to call a point of order. But when people start yelling and screaming in here, it is inappropriate. It's unprofessional. It's threatening to others. I mean, we've sat here for years, and as counselors, I think we, you know, we know sometimes there are difficult contentious situations. But it's for other folks, especially sitting in the audience. They should not be subject to that. So when it crosses the line, we'll continue to call a point of order. I think people can come in and share their ideas and their thoughts. Clearly, at times, people are very emotional or concerned. They can convey that. They don't need to yell and scream, and they can be professional in their decorum. So I just wanted to note that also.
Ms. Jordan?
I'll pass, thanks.
Ms. Basara?
Pass, thanks.
Ms. Savage? I'm sorry, Ms. Cheryl?
I was about to say, where are you going? Yeah, thank you for the comments about the public commenting. I really, I really do appreciate the public coming and commenting, and specifically the woman, I'm sorry if I forgot your name, but thinking about ideas like Bear Smart and Compost being a partnership. I mean, that's really smart, and we do get a lot of really good ideas and good directions from public comment, and I appreciate it, and I hope the public comes down, and I agree, everyone, whether you're here as a school project coming into comment, which we have lots of kid groups over the years that come in, and I absolutely appreciate that. But they also need to feel safe in this space. I was gonna make a comment about appreciating public comment tonight, so I guess that just adds on to the others.
Mr. Kontos?
Oh, pass, thanks.
Ms. Basika? Because that's
Thanks. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I wanted to hope that everyone had a great Mother's Day yesterday. It was a beautiful day for half the day. And on that note, I live close to the Russell Street Bridge. And so last time that I went underneath Russell Street Bridge, a week ago, I said I was never, ever doing that again. And so last time that I went underneath Russell Street Bridge, a week ago, I said I was never ever doing that again. And then yesterday on my Mother's Day bike ride with my son and my husband, I said, you know, maybe he's gotten better and it has not. And I know that a lot of folks are really frustrated with urban camping that is happening and I am very frustrated with it as well because, once again, I'm never going there again. But my curiosity may change that. There was a newspaper article today that, that talked about some of the, the houseless individuals that are underneath Russell Street Bridge. It's, it's really unfortunate because as taxpayers, people who pay for these, these sidewalks and these trails are afraid to use them and I'm, I'm one of them that is uncomfortable using them. I just want the public to know that we are, I, I'm in discussions with a lot of city officials. There's a meeting this week that's happening to figure out what we can do. I know that I've been on record disagreeing with what the city can and cannot do. I want the public to know that I, I hear you. I'm there with you. I feel the same way. And so I'm, I'm just as frustrated, so hopefully that we can figure out a solution that will benefit all. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Carlino? And Mr. Nugent?
I'll pass, thanks.
Thanks. Okay, well, we have no additional items on our agenda. We have our standing administratively-approved agreement report. And with no further business, we will be adjourned. Thanks for your service.